Good evening and welcome to the Sherwood School Board Forum. This event is hosted by your nonprofit and nonpartisan Sherwood area Chamber of Commerce. My name is Christopher McCollum and I have the pleasure of serving as the Chamber's Board President. I'm also a last minute substitution as your moderator. Joining me tonight is our CEO Farah Burke and Trevor Suie. We'd like to take a moment to thank the city for the use of this space and the countless volunteers that made tonight possible. Before we get started, I'd like to share the rules for tonight's forum. They cover the candidates, me as a moderator, and our audience. These rules were provided to our candidates prior to tonight's event. For our candidates, equal opportunity. All candidates will be given equal time for opening statements, answering questions, and closing remarks, one minute each per topic. Nonpartisanship. Candidates should focus on their qualifications and platforms rather than engaging in partisan attacks or endorsements. Respectful conduct. Candidates are expected to respect, to be respectful of each other, the moderator and the audience. For the moderator. Neutrality and fairness. The moderator shall remain neutral and treat all candidates equally. Time management. The moderator is responsible for keeping the form on schedule and enforcing time limits, which I'll be doing with the assistance of Trevor. Thank you. Ensuring order. The moderator should ensure respectful conduct from both candidates and the audience. For the audience. Respectful behavior. The audience is asked to be respectful of all candidates and refrain from disruptive behavior such as cheering, jeering, or excessive applause. And with that being said, we'll get started. So before we jump into the list of questions we put together for tonight's event, we'd like to give each of the candidates a moment to go ahead and introduce themselves. Do you want to start first, Abby?
Okay, we're finally on. These mics are different than what we're used to, so they're a little funky. But my name's Abby Hawkins. I've served on the school board for the last four years. I'm currently the vice chair and I'm running for reelection.
Let her run. Matt Kaufman. I am a parent of two Middleton Elementary students. I've been on the city budget committee and the school board budget committee for a number of years. And now I'm running for a position on the school board.
My name is Callie Ross. I've spent the last five years being an advocate for disability services, home and community-based services, and education policy here in Oregon. I've passed multiple bills and I've worked closely with legislators on state funding. I hope to bring that experience here to our district and I want to thank you all for being here tonight.
My name is Hans Moller. I have been on the school board for the last two years and I have filled an open seat during the last election cycle. And I am now currently running for another term. And I have really enjoyed the board. I have two high schoolers and have learned a tremendous amount being in this position and hopefully will continue. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. All right, first question, and we'll start with Abby. Why are you running for school board? And if elected, what will be your priorities?
I think I just have a hard mic. So four years ago when I ran, I really said it was my priority to be a voice for students and parents and community members. And I feel like I've done that. And I definitely still feel like that is a huge priority of mine. But we passed a levy in this community and the taxpayers were amazing to trust us with that. And so, to be honest, a huge piece of me wanting to run again is to bring stability to our district. We've had a lot of changes with leadership. I think we are in a very good position right now. But I want to kind of see that through. I want to make sure that the leadership continues to move forward the way that I believe it's going to. And I want to see that the district is continuing to spend the funds the way that we promised the community that we would spend those funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. Next up is Matt.
It, excuse me. Over the past, you know, four or five years, I've been involved on the city side with budget, budget process. I've been involved on the school district side. And I know how much work goes in to delivering the services that make sure we're at a great place to live. And so I am hoping to join the board to, you know, keep that process moving and to help reinforce some of the, you know, financial changes that we've put in place and the additional financial accountability that's been put in place. And hopefully, you know, leave Sherwood schools in a better place than when I found them.
Thank you, Matt. Callie?
I care deeply for our schools and all the children in our community. I'm a mom of three. My oldest will be entering high school in the fall and my youngest will be entering her school career in a few years. My middle son was failed by our school system and it often overlooks those with disabilities. Because of that lived experience and years of advocacy, I've seen firsthand how systematic inequalities and how education's fun, education funding is spent. My priorities are fiscal responsibility. I want transparency in spending and I want to explore sustainable solutions like line item medical billing, Medicaid billing. And I don't want to have to depend on tax increases. I think keeping equity and inclusion at the forefront of our school curriculum, safe schools, removing concealed carry from our campuses, and empowering our educators with our trust, those are my top priorities.
Thank you, Callie. Hans?
Thank you. I, like Abby, joined the board during a period of tremendous change and change for the better, I believe, with a levy, a bond prior to that, and two superintendents. And I like what we have now. I really think the team, the board, the administrative side is a solid foundation and would like to see that occur. I view my role importantly in that as a liaison, a listener, a person bringing ideas to the administrative side and trying to communicate as best as I can to the community. We have a strong team in the board that brings multiple perspectives and that's valuable. There's always more than one way to skin the cat and I really value that. So I feel good about the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we'll start with Matt. What differentiates you from other candidates and/or board members? What unique qualities would you bring to the role? Are there specifics of your education experience that you feel would be especially helpful in this position?
Unfortunately, I don't bring microphone, microphone skills to the board. So I am, I come from a financial background. So I'm an accountant by trade. I am CPA in the state of Oregon. I am an accounting professor at Portland State. And so I got involved with the school board through the budget committee and helping to improve, you know, financial accountability and some put in place a few additional controls and best practices over the past few years. And I'm hoping to continue, to continue that upward trajectory in how the district manages its finances, but also how the district communicates its finances to the community.
Thank you, Matt. Callie?
I'm just not even going to mess with it. I'm just staying on. I have a deep understanding of state budget policy and I take an active role in shaping it. When I first started digging into education policy, I noticed board members across the state advocating for funding and services locally, federally, and at the state level. Sherwood had nobody there. I want to be that person. I come with a strong network of lawmakers across the political spectrum. I've worked with the Oregon State Legislature to pass bipartisan legislation other people said was impossible to pass. This matters because 70% of our budget comes from the state. My combination of policy expertise, advocacy experience, my collaborative approach would ensure our district's voices are heard where it really matters.
Thank you, Callie.
I think I'll leave that on too, Callie. Good point.
Yeah.
I guess what I've learned or what I bring is that I'm just an old guy with a lot of kids and a lot of ability to listen. And so in that listening, try to bring those ideas to the people that can make change or facilitate change. Try to balance all the inputs that the community has and that the administrative side of the district and the teachers have. And how does it focus on our students as the primary concern? How does it aid them? And that's a big topic and one that requires thoughtful conversation. So I think that's what I bring to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Abby?
See, I'm already making your life easier, Hans. I'm gonna at you. Okay. What do I bring to the board? Well, I was a trained counselor. I worked as a counselor for several years before going and working for my own business. And to be honest with you, I never used those skills more than being on the school board. It is hard to work with lots of different people and to understand their perspectives. It's hard to understand what they want out of that. It's also hard to turn around to your district and try to get them to understand those desires and come together and create goals. And so I do think that background has really served me well. I have proven over the last four years that I can work with people that have very different beliefs and ideas than myself. And furthermore, being the only board member now that has been there for four years, I have a lot of historical knowledge of our district, of why we are where we are now, pitfalls we hit in the past, and I actually think it's really invaluable.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Callie. Describe your experience in working with parents, community members, the business community, and human service agencies.
So over the past several years, I've worked really closely with parents and educators, community members and lawmakers to advocate for policies that directly impact families' education and especially in disability services. I've partnered with ODE and the Office of Developmental Disabilities to hash out budgets, which is a lot of fun. And I have helped build one of the most successful grassroots organizations that Oregon has seen in the last 50 years. Recently, I have been reaching out to local businesses and unions to talk about supporting apprenticeship programs and workshops to further trade, further the trade pathways for our high school students.
Thank you.
Hey, Chris, could you say, repeat the question again? Sorry.
Absolutely, and happy to repeat them at any point in time. So feel free to ask. Describe your experience in working with parents, community members, the business community, and human service agencies.
Well, I would say that I am one of those parents who just gets involved with the school. So tremendous amount of volunteering at Archer Middle School, as best we could with the young students there and knowing the teachers and navigating and helping them. And in the community, bringing some of the representation to the high school, more the high school, as Callie had mentioned, with internship programs, mentorships, et cetera. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Abby?
I've worked with all these people pretty extensively. I started volunteering in our district when my oldest was first entering school, so well over 10 years. And I've partnered with businesses and community members for many years. I was on the Sherwood Education Foundation Board for about seven years prior to being on the school board. And I own a business in Sherwood, so I've worked with a lot of businesses in Sherwood. As far as human service agencies, to be honest, I don't really feel like that's been applicable to the school board. It's not something that we typically do and not really our role, but I think what we do do well is work with our city partnerships. And I have strong relationships with our mayor and many city counselors and we've partnered together on a lot of projects and stay in close communication so that we know what's important to the city and what's important to the school district and we're able to move those goals forward. I know it is very important to the city to see the school district do well and thrive.
Thank you.
When I read this question, the first thing that I thought about was being on the sideline of like a youth soccer event or a youth softball event. And the reason that came to mind is in those settings, you realize, one, there are a lot of different perspectives in and around Sherwood. And two, sometimes those perspectives come into conflict. And it's been, I really appreciate watching things that have happened at the city level, watching things that have happened at the school, school board level, just how much work people put in to trying to hear all sides of different issues and different, you know, parts of the community and then work to try to consolidate that into, into something that everybody can, can move, move forward together.
Thank you. Our next question will start with Hans. What do you see as the primary work of the school board? And what is a school board member's role and responsibility?
You bet. And that was a learning, that was a learning before I got on the board. It wasn't quite what, the reality is not quite what you may think it is. The board really is, in my view, a liaison between the community and the administration. We really have no authority other than to hire the superintendent and work with him closely to keep an eye on him and make sure that he is, quote unquote, doing his job. I feel very strongly with Aaron that he is committed to Sherwood. So don't take your eye off the prize, but that's really what we do. And so we're really trying to get information to the community as best we can and as clearly as we can on all the topics that the administration takes care of and relay that to the community and listen to the community and bring those ideas, which are sometimes not heard very well, to the administrative side and work with them to find a solution, as was mentioned. So, thank you.
Thank you, Hans. Abby?
Yeah. We definitely do that a fair amount of our job, right? But as a board, I mean, our main priorities are to hire and oversee a superintendent, which we've done now twice in four years. And it is a tremendous amount of work. And we work with them to understand their goals and to make sure that they are following up on those goals. And that is really our only direct hire. We, outside of that, we approve policy and we sometimes make recommendations. We don't tend to write policy, but we do approve it and review it. We review and approve curriculum and sometimes we have a role in being able to be a part of those committees so that we can better understand the curriculum before it becomes up for adoption. That's been a really cool process the last couple of years because we've been allowed to participate in a way that we weren't allowed to participate in the past. And I don't mean by allowed, like we weren't able to, but we were invited in. And I would say lastly, we oversee the district's budget and make sure that we are following through with our budget goals.
Thank you. Matt?
Oh, there we go. Yeah, I think every, everything that everyone said is a, is a really good example of what the district does. I, the thing I would add is just asking good questions and being a sounding board, both for the community about, you know, what, what are people hearing or thinking about what's going on at the district level? And also, you know, asking the district questions and for clarification and just raising points that, you know, maybe people haven't thought about or maybe haven't, didn't really think about how the unintended way something might be communicated or if there's a better way to communicate or be more clear in, in what the goals are or what people are trying to accomplish.
Thank you. Callie?
Yeah, I'm really kind of sad to hear my fellow colleagues up here discussing what the board policy is because I see board members at the state level all the time, standing there advocating on behalf of the students, on behalf of their district. I think the board member can use their position to do more. I think overseeing high-quality education with a safe and equitable education. I think that education needs to be represent our diverse population. As Abby was saying, we oversee some of the curriculum and I want that to be diverse, equitable, and inclusive. I think setting a vision for the district and adopting policies and holding the superintendent accountable for the results. But I truly think the most impactful thing a board member can do is listening to their community and actively advocating for greater supports for the needs of our district. We just don't have that right now and it's, other districts do.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Abby. How do you view the board's role versus the administration's role in operating the school district?
Yeah. So the school board, I mean, like I said before, we set the policies and goals and objectives and we work with the superintendent to see that they are following through on those objectives. But with our administrators, they drive their ships, right? I mean, that is what they're hired to do and we allow them to do that. They guide academics, they guide the way that their objectives for their own buildings. Obviously, the superintendent oversees that, but as a school board, we don't independently micromanage our administrators. They really are in charge of their buildings and we are in charge of working with the superintendent to make sure that our goals are being met.
Thank you. Matt?
Yeah, I would just, exactly. Continuous improvement. The, I would echo what Abby, you know, we, we hire a superintendent and spend a lot of time in that process and making sure we get the right person for a reason. And once that person's in place, you know, we, it's important that we, you know, trust their judgment, but also verify that, you know, things are happening in line with what the community expects. And I see it, I guess, kind of as more of an advise and consent, kind of a role around a really strong district leadership team. Our, our job is to ask good questions, make sure that the community is getting good answers. And then, you know, if we do have concerns, then we step in. But for the most part, you know, we hire, hire a superintendent and then that superintendent does a great job.
Thank you, Matt. Callie?
I mean, we are, we are a team of 10. And I think first and foremost, the board member's role is to advocate on behalf of the district. Truly do. I hear, you know, overseeing superintendents, but there's, there's so much more to this role if you use it appropriately. And I think board members first and foremost is to advocate. I think ensuring students and family and staff are supported by good policy, keeping fiscal responsibility and holding administrators accountable. I think that the board sets a vision on how the school can succeed and then the administration handles the day-to-day. They implement that vision. I think together, we create a district that can be more welcoming than it currently is.
Thank you.
Chris, question one more time. Sorry.
Absolutely. How do you view the board's role versus the administration's role in operating the school district?
Okay, everyone's right, but I might make comment. I don't want to belittle the role of the board. The board is very intimately associated with the superintendent. That's our direct report, so to speak. And he has metrics, he has goals. They're reviewed every year. Did he make those or did he not? That goes into the criteria of his performance review. The board does that, okay? Not the administrative side of the team. So that's important because it really builds a relationship, a working relationship that really is solid and trustworthy. So, and it's true what Callie's saying too. We do advocate, there's different ways to do that. And it's, it's complex. Let's leave it at that. But asking the questions, clarifying the questions, bringing up the details, as Matt said, is really important.
Thank you. Matt, well, you start with this next question. What do you believe is the greatest challenge and the greatest reward about school board service?
I think the, the greatest challenge and the greatest reward is kind of the same. It's, it is that it is a difficult thing to do. Like there are a lot of different perspectives on, you know, and a lot of different expectations that people have for a school district. And it is a challenge to integrate all of those perspectives into one organization that can, that we can all be proud of, that we can all be excited to say, you know, I live in Sherwood and people know, know what goes along with living in Sherwood. And that's, there's a reward that comes with that as well. Like when we all work together to have a great school district, like we all get to reap the rewards, both from, you know, being able to see our children go through the school district or, you know, being able to attend sports games or just being part of a community that represents all of us.
Thank you. Callie?
Can I say the campaigning? That's definitely the most difficult part so far. But I really think that making decisions that impact a diverse and sometimes divided community and balancing a limited budget with a lot of worthy causes and, you know, equal needs, that's definitely going to be the challenge. I think that the reward is the community, the students and the teachers and the community that we build together. Making a difference, helping become more welcoming, less bullying, mental health supports, a safer district without concealed carry. I find satisfaction in making space for diverse opinions and I find satisfaction in coming together and finding possible solutions.
I appreciate that question and I'm going to toot the horn a little bit here. The vision and/or plan is so important. And the district will roll out a strategic plan at the end of May. This has been a work in process for months. We don't have an adequate plan that's been alluded to and it is coming. I'm very excited about the work that's been done. And it will focus on a fundamental principle of student engagement and agency. It will cover all the things that have been mentioned and it won't please everybody, but I think that it will answer and speak to keeping people's ideas focused on these young people that have to enter the world in a very unusual world at this time. And so flexibility, dynamism, measurement, all of this will be in that plan.
Yep. The greatest challenge will always be funding. I mean, I don't want to go into detail about it, but it will always be funding, figuring out enough funding. I think secondly, a challenge is public perception. It is hard for citizens to understand what your abilities are and what your abilities are not, which is okay, but I've never had anybody join the board in the time I've been here that didn't say, I had no idea this was the job until I was in it for six months. You just really don't understand the role until you're in it. And so I don't think our job is to be lobbyists, not that that's not important in some districts. I don't feel like that's our job. In Sherwood, we have had our plate very full with the work of the district and it's been important work. And I think that we have put our time and energy into doing that work and it has mattered. In fact, I spent a lot of time today doing that work. The greatest reward is the 51 teachers that we did not have to fire. Every time I go into our classrooms, that is my greatest reward. Sorry to speed up.
Thank you. Callie, well, you start next. What is the school board member's role in the financial responsibility of the school district?
I mean, adopting a balanced and sustainable budget, asking tough questions to ensure accountability and transparency from the administration. I think planning long-term to avoid shortfalls and budget cuts. And given the uncertainty at the federal level, I think, you know, we need to bolstering our budget now. We need to be actively exploring less traditional funding sources. I have asked for records requests here and I can see the line-by-line Medicaid billing is not happening. I can witness the grants that we are not filing. So I think it's really important that we actively pursue these different pathways. I do feel it's very important to have an experienced advocate at the state level. I think pushing for the necessary resources for funding our district that needs to thrive will ultimately be at a state-level intervention. And to keep our schools healthy and committed to educating our students, somebody needs to do something.
Thank you.
Okay, I learned about, a lot about the budget in the last two years and I certainly am not a numbers budget guy. It's extremely complex. You, hopefully you have a trustworthy CFO in Gary Bennett. And I think some districts run amok. They just don't have that experience and/or expertise. We have, we are fortunate to have that person. And then we deal with a moving deck of cards. How much money is there? We don't know. When will it shift? How much will we get? We didn't know until yesterday what we get for this year. So it's a very complex process. And I think the best I can do is try to understand and try to look and try to listen carefully and see if anything is really off. And sometimes it is a little bit off. And then ask Gary and he can try to explain it to you. So I'm, I'm an observer and a So I'm, I'm, I'm an observer and I try to adjust as much as I can with that complexity. And I hope, I'm glad Matt's there because he's a CPA.
We've, we've talked about it tons of times already, but our goal is to set the budget, to monitor the budget. We review the audit. We do weigh in and make decisions with our board and with the executive team when decisions need to be made. Ultimately, it's not always our call, but they are very good at talking with us when there is movement that needs to happen and making sure that we're expressing to them what we believe the community would like to see if movement has to happen. And it's really our job to ask questions. Like, the Medicaid question has been asked because I care. I'm a board member currently. I want to make sure that we are doing those things correctly. And in our district, it's actually costs us money to itemize line-by-line Medicaid because we don't have enough students in our district that are on a Oregon health plan and come participate in that. So it costs us a lot of money to file it and do it that way. We'd have to pay for additional staff to do that. So there are reasons that we don't do everything the same as other districts, but it's important to ask those questions. Thank you.
Yeah, I see two real roles for the budget in the financial oversight of the district. I think the first one, and probably the most important one, is just being, being, pushing for stability and making sure that we don't, you know, over invest when times are good or under invest when, when times get tight. And to really try to take, take a straight line approach and to, to make sure that we continue in a solid, we, we continue in solid fiscal footing from, you know, one budget cycle to the next. The other one is just, I think, asking, you know, sometimes dumb question, like asking the dumb questions. I'm like, oh, why do we do it this way? Or why is this, why did this account change by this amount? And, you know, there, there's always good answers to those questions. But in getting those answers, everybody understands the financial position of the district a little bit better.
Hans? How will you work and communicate with your fellow school board members and administration if elected?
Okay, that's a great question. And it's a learning experience because a lot of rules of when is a quorum? What can you use in your email? What can you say? What, not what you can, you can say anything, freedom of speech, but how do you do it? And so you have to learn that where there's a session of learning and we always are updated on policy changes of that. But I guess I lost track of the question. So, I mean, we work well, I mean, if you have a trustworthy team, a trustworthy board, and you really can hash out the details and the minutia and come together collectively as one voice, it is a powerful message to the community, to the administration, to the teachers, to the students. So that's the way I kind of see interacting with my board members is trying to build that relationship of trust, listening to different perspectives and moving forward in general consensus.
Thank you. Abby?
Yeah, I will say this has shifted over the last few years. When I first got here, board members did not have access to anybody outside of the superintendent. That, when I came in, that was the way it was. And it was, it was hard to get your questions answered sometimes and you had to go through several people. It is no longer that way, which is amazing. We really do have an executive team that says, call us anytime you need anything and we will answer you. I still feel like it is best as a board member to first let the chair know that you're going to have conversations about that for the most part. And then also, I tend to let Dr. Downs know, just so that he's in the loop that there's curiosity or questions or concerns around something. That tends to be the most efficient way to communicate. And as far as communicating with the board members, we all are able to communicate whenever we need to or want to. But it always works best if you take your concerns or questions directly to the board chair and then let them kind of disseminate the information back out to the other board members. So we do that.
Matt?
Yeah, I think it's a team effort. I think schools, schools are a team, you know, being on the school board is a team effort. Schools are a team effort for the community. And I think it's important to have open and frank and honest communication. And being able to communicate like that also means listening to, to other people who have different perspectives or different ideas or, you know, maybe, maybe different, different priorities for, for what the, what the schools should be or should do. And then remembering that, you know, for every person you're talking to, that's a whole segment of our community that has a similar set of perspectives or beliefs or values and making room for all, all aspects of our community to be heard and to go into the decision-making process for the district.
Yeah, I mean, I hope we can all be adults. I, I will approach this with respect and collaboration in mind, treating it like any professional role I've ever had in my life. And disagreements happen. I think it's part of the process, but coming together with an open mind, being willing to listen to different opinions and coming together to find a possible solution. I, I mean, obviously don't scream at each other, don't, I don't know what the, yeah, just communicate like you're an adult. Be, be mature.
Thank you, Kelly. Next question, we'll start off with Abby. How would you react if approached by a parent or teacher with complaints about a school issue or an employee? What is your role as a board member in that situation?
Yeah, this one's hard because, well, for me personally, it's hard. I am a problem solver, which is probably why I became a counselor. And I have a lot of connections in the community, to be honest. And so when I'm out and about, I do have people approach me a fair amount. Not always with serious issues, but things that they would like to bring to my attention. And the first year I was on the board, it was hard to honestly kind of stay in my lane because I wanted to fix things or get to the right person and resolve it. But that really isn't the role of the board and we have to be pretty careful to not go down that road too far with people because seldomly, things get escalated to a board complaint. We're very lucky, it doesn't happen very often. But if we over-involve ourselves in the process along the way, then it does become very messy. And we can't participate in that process the way we'd like to. So I always try to hear what someone has to say and get them directed to the person that is most appropriate to take their concern and then follow up with them and follow up with the superintendent.
Thank you. Matt?
Yeah, this one's a little bit tricky because it kind of depends on the issue that we're, that we're talking about. And there are some, you know, that, that's going to vary in severity quite a bit. But when it comes to problems, I always find that trying to be proactive and make sure that we have good policies and procedures in place before problems come up is the best way to proactively deal with a problem once it arises. So my, my approach for any type of issue would be to first ask the question, you know, what are our policies here? What are, what are the procedures we have in place? Are we following those first? And then are there, are there any potential gaps that we, we need to think about as a district? And, you know, where we go from there really kind of depends on what issue, what issue it is we're talking about.
Thank you. Kelly?
This is what I do. I, I'm happy to listen to my community and I will take your concerns seriously. I would, depending on the issue, I think I would guide you to the appropriate channels to address what, what you need to be addressed, whether that's an administration or an educator or another parent. I guess if a pattern of concern emerges, especially related to policy or systemic issues, then that's something I would bring to the board level for a discussion. Our role as a board member is to set policy and provide oversight. It's not necessarily to invest, investigate a very individual case. That being said, as a board member, I, I want to be accessible to my community and I am here to listen to your concerns.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree, this one is tricky. As a board member in the community, you are a board member in the community. You're no longer the sixth grade parent. You're wearing a different hat. And so these questions that arise, 98% of the time, I won't have, I won't know the answer to a legitimate, clearly stated concern. But the best I can do is, as Abby echoed, Matt said, and Kelly said the same thing. Find out, don't dismiss, find out who can I send this information to that can help answer this question and then follow up to make sure that, that the, that there was a closed loop.
Thank you. Matt, how can a school board member best communicate with the community?
I think openly and honestly and just remembering that you are both a member of the community and representing the community and trying your best to, you know, be yourself, but also to keep in mind the, the broader set of perspectives that are, are here in Sherwood and being open to hear from, you know, people who think differently and asking yourself, oh, that's, it's interesting that this person saw this issue really differently than I saw it. What, what might be the cause there? What might be the, the, either the thing we see differently or the thing we disagree about? And are there ways that we can find a solution to, to incorporate everybody's, everybody's perspective and everybody's concern, or at least make sure that everybody feels heard as part of the process?
A board operates best when it's transparent and when it's accessible and when it's proactive. We can't count on people showing up for a monthly public meeting. So I think we need to be out there building relationships with educators, with students, with parent groups. I believe that being visible and approachable is really important. And I think that we really need to be showing up and participating in community events, especially student-led initiatives. Yeah, that's what I got.
Thank you.
Okay, I agree with Kelly on that. I think just being present and being involved, showing your face about, and particularly at the schools, it helps immensely. And not everybody knows who you are and, you know, be proactive in introducing yourself to people that have no clue who are, who you are. And it just creates a community, it creates a trust, an easier access. You know, we're easily to reach, people may not know that, but we are. And then we hope we can get you help and directed the right way.
Thank you.
I kind of read this a little bit differently. I was thinking about how we communicate out to the community. And I do believe the best way that we do that is through our school board meetings. That is where we meet, that is where we share information. We have time for board reports, we have time for discussions, we have work sessions where we have very good discussions. And that's really where the, the work of the board is, that people can tune into and understand and then come back and ask questions. And so I feel like that is our best place to communicate out to people. And I know that our board members are pretty thoughtful about what they want to bring forward and talk about and so that people in the community do have an understanding and thoughtful about asking questions that we may actually even kind of know the answer to. But we want to be sure that people in the community are getting that answer as well, if we know that might be a tricky subject. As far as reaching out to me, every single person in this community, I think at this point, has my phone number and email address. And we all are very accessible and return calls and emails all the time, so.
Thank you. Kelly, what issues do you believe this school board needs to address in its academic programs?
Yeah, Sherwood needs to strengthen its academic offerings. And they need to be preparing kids that are outside the mold for success, whether that's in the college or trades. We need to be offering STEM classes to a younger generation. We need to expand our career and technical education programs. We need to invest in special education and we need to make sure that the funds for special education that are earmarked for special education end up being where they are meant to be. We need to support early literacy and we need evidence-based interventions. And we need to be encouraging children to read without barriers. We need inter, we need to protect and expand the dual-language program. And we need to keep a diverse and representative curricula that reflects the backgrounds and identities of all students. I think improving access to mental health and my vision for the district is that every student, regardless of ability, background, identity or income, is welcome and can access their right to a free and appropriate education.
Thank you.
Chris, I'll ask you again to repeat that.
Absolutely. What issues do you believe this school board needs to address in its academic programs?
Yeah, that's a great question. I, I came onto the board thinking, I'm an educator. I'm not an educator. I'm a mentor in orthopedic surgery and a resident trainer. That's, that's like the guy at Les Schwab. An educator is so different. And I spent a lot of time in teaching and learning because I didn't, I realized that it's so complex. And what I see happening there is hard to project to the community. So there's an impasse there. But that team and what they're involved with is, touches on everything Kelly has mentioned and moving forward in those arenas. It is extremely impressive. Now, it doesn't happen overnight. And, uh, but if you're looking at, are people concerned with young, young people's education? Absolutely. And I have no doubt.
Thank you. Abby?
Yeah, the needs, I think, are really ever-changing, right? We're always trying to keep up with what students want in their offerings. And that changes and it's hard sometimes to make those changes. We actually do have really phenomenal STEM classes for all of our elementary kids that are really amazing. And our CTE program is doing phenomenal. But there are things we'd like to add, like we would love to be teaching more than just Spanish. But we also don't have the students who want to sign up to take a full class of something other than just Spanish or not enough students to pay for the teacher. So those are challenges that we're always kind of trying to work through. Curriculum adoption, we're always working through trying to find curriculum that is new and cutting-edge and the best available, but it also has to meet our state standards. And when you go to all of those things and you work through that process, you end up typically with one or two options. And so finding the best one that our, that we can pilot. Lastly, really quickly, my vision for education. I would like our students to leave our district with the ability to thrive on their own, whether it be military or trades or college or independent living. I just want our students to be able to leave our district and thrive independently.
I'll put a plug in for something Hans has put a lot of effort into. The district is about to roll out a strategic plan where it articulates, you know, where are we now and where do we want to go? And looks at a variety of measures, like, you know, third grade reading scores, eighth grade math scores, you know, how are students completing high school successfully? Like, are they set up for post-secondary success? I think we have clear goal, or I think the district is working on formalizing some clear goals for where we want to go into the future. And I think it's the board's responsibility to hold district leadership accountable for hitting, hitting the goals that they set.
Thank you, Matt. Hans, how can the school board work with student government and clubs to help them feel involved in decisions made for the district?
That is a tricky one too, in the sense that a, a portion of that exists already. There is a student at the board meetings giving the, the reports through the high school. It does, the board meetings do seem at times tilted with public comment as their only avenue of expression sometimes. But, but board members are involved with students outside of the boardroom and in multiple clubs and experiences and mentorships. So, and sometimes that's not really recognized, but there is a lot of involvement by the board members in students' lives as well. And so I, I think everyone's invested in that, that's on the board at this point in time.
Thank you. Abby?
Yeah, this is something I wish we actually had more opportunity to do. The way that the board works, it really is a top-down approach. We, not that we're not welcome, but we don't walk into a school building and approach a club and tell them we'd like to be involved. It's not appropriate for school board members actually to behave in that way. And so if a club or a group of students would like for us to be involved, they actually need to approach us, which seems, I know, a little bit funky. And there's probably a better way that we need to communicate that because I don't think, I know students don't always understand that because they send us emails and check in with us and ask how to get involved. So we probably do need to do a better job of communicating that. But they could invite us into presentations, they could invite us into their classrooms. I think actually all of us love working with students. But I will say as a board member, if you are going to take on working with a student, I feel like it's very important to continue your work through that process with them and help them understand how to advocate and work on their goals alongside the school board.
Thank you. Matt?
Yeah, and I, I would echo that. Like, I think that we Yeah, and I would echo that. Like, I think that we could perhaps make it a little bit clearer, like how student groups and student clubs can reach out to the board and like ways to effectively engage with the board. I also think one, one thing that the board can do is help, help student groups and student government and student advocates to understand how complicated some of the things we have to deal with are. And some of the reasons that, you know, things that may at first seem like a really simple thing to get done is actually not that simple in practice. And, you know, not doing that in a dismissive way, but as a real chance to teach, you know, the civic process and everything that goes into guiding a community through to a decision that everybody can support and, and move forward with together.
Thank you. Kelly?
Yeah, I feel very differently. I think our students are why I'm here. I think that our students offer a very valuable perspective. And I believe that our students should never be ignored, and they should never have been called and harassed by a sitting board member. I fully support the representative from the student government coming, giving a little breakdown of everything. I think we should also be inviting other student clubs to join the board meetings. I support holding joint meetings and listening sessions with our student leaders. And I think the board could survey student groups on decisions like school climate, bell changes, and curriculum changes. I think we need to create an advisory committee with students and members when relevant. And as a board member, when invited to attend clubs and participate in student-led initiatives, I think you need to come. I think you need to be there and participate. I, for one, would be happy to have more student involvement with the board. And I think that we underestimate how wonderful our Sherwood students are.
Thank you. Abby, how does a school board balance the need to provide a quality education with the need to respond to local taxpayer burden?
Yeah, I mean, I actually feel like our taxpayers do feel like we're providing a quality education. I think that is why they chose to vote yes on the levy. I don't think they would have passed it if they didn't feel like that was something that we were doing. But with that being said, we have to be very careful of all the dollars being spent. And we are never going to have enough dollars to add all of the programs that we would like to offer. So the district gets creative, and I will not take board credit for that. That is really the district that is very creative with their work. I know our CTE program is partnering with all kinds of community members to bring in opportunities for our students that are free for us. It's free for us to have them come in. It's free for us to have our students go into their buildings and partner with them and work alongside them and learn from them. And so we try to do our very best to up the quality of what we're able to produce with the little bit of funding that we do have.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's important that the board works with the district to make sure we're getting the most out of every dollar, you know, we get from the state or that we get from the community. And make sure that, you know, we're good stewards of the resources that the community trusts us with to deliver an education to Sherwood students. I also think it's our job to communicate really clearly the value the community gets from the, you know, the taxes we pay, both, you know, the direct taxes that we get to keep and direct all of those funds, but also to clarify, you know, there are a lot of taxes that don't go directly to the school, school district. And we don't, we don't necessarily control how some of those funds get spent. And so making it really clear to everyone, you know, the constraints that we operate under, but also what we're doing with the resources that the community trusts us with is a, is an important part of making sure that people support the district long-term.
Thank you. Kelly?
Sherwood has this reputation of wealth, but many of us are struggling. Our strong schools attract new families while simultaneously pricing out the old. I don't want to see another significant board error create the need for an emergency levy. I don't want to overburden struggling homeowners. I want to strike a balance, prioritize what has greatest impact on student success, and such as, and use evidence-based instruction in special education and career readiness. I think exploring alternative funding sources, and I keep saying Medicaid, because I know how it works in schools. Long-term planning to avoid waste, minimize cuts, and protect core education programs. And we need to use our voices as board members to advocate for Sherwood funding at a state level. Without that representation, Sherwood will continue to place too much of a burden on the backs of our taxpayers.
Thank you. Hans?
Okay, so when, I, I just go a little historical perspective, and a shout out to the community. The community passed the levy two years ago that saved the district's butt, in a nutshell. And we won't go into all the reasons for that. But had that not happened, it was mentioned 51 teachers were hired, and the building programs that would not have happened. And so that is a tremendous thing. Now, we would have needed the levy even now with the current funding from the state. So it's a very simple formula of underfunding from the state, and the Sherwood community made up the gap. So there's a pie there. But the pie has to be used equitably. It has to be used wisely, because there was never enough pie to go around. So that's what we are keeping an eye on and trying to listen in balance. And that's what we're working with.
Thank you. Hans, in your opinion, what changes should be made on the state and local level regarding public education?
You could spend hours on that one. I mean, everything's monetized, but we need more money. Okay. Secondly, the, the people to track the results, Kelly's mentioned this several times, you, you've got to show results of success. And, okay, it's going to cost money to do that. So, but we already have the infrastructure to do that. So that will happen in Sherwood. And then you need to make that information known to people. So they see the value of those payments and what they're getting, and how it is valuable for everyone, whether they have kids in school or not, it's valuable to them as well. So I'll stop there.
Thank you. Abby?
This is really tricky. The state, you know, it's run like a business, and there's only so much money, and schools always want more of it, and we're never going to have enough of it. I know Harmony and I sat at a meeting with a lot of other board members a couple of months ago, and a lot of the conversation was about, like, how do we go back to the state and give a heartfelt plea for more money? But the reality is, they did not want a heartfelt plea. They wanted us to come back with concrete reasons why we deserved more money. You know, everybody wants more money. And so why are we asking for more? And what are we going to do with it? And so I think the conversation has to change. I don't think, I think educators in general have big hearts. And so that's why they like to tell that story. But it's not speaking to the people who are dipping out the money. And so that conversation needs to change. Secondly, I think the money that we are getting comes to us with a lot of stipulations. And that's really difficult to go into detail with, but I know in Sherwood, we hire sometimes and put people in positions that are not the most ultimate thing we need in Sherwood, but it's a way to utilize that funding source. So less stipulations would really, really help.
Yeah, if I had a, had a magic wand and could change how Salem approaches public education, I think it would be great if districts didn't need to pass local option levies. And if we were in a state where, you know, education was funded adequately for all districts, but as it, as it stands now, there are district, you know, there are, that is a part of the Oregon school funding mechanism. And if you look around at the districts that surround us, Woodburn, Wilsonville, they have a local option levy. Tiger, Twalton, they have a local option levy. Portland Public, they have a local option levy. So does Beaverton. And the, that has just become part of how Oregon, or how Oregon districts fund education. And I think it makes it really confusing when there are all these different buckets that all fund education in different ways. And it would be great if that could be simplified and funded holistically.
Thank you. Kelly?
Well, y'all, it sounds like we need somebody at the state level. We need to fully fund K through 12 education. I've partnered with other board members across the state, including the Oregon School Board Association, to help pass HB 2953 and House Bill 2448. Both of those lift the cap on special education funding, and one would significantly increase grants for special education. When we invest in special education, we invest in the entire school. So those are very important. And knowing how school budgets work and working with legislators to modernize the funding formula is incredibly important to getting money straight to our district. You just need somebody at the state, guys. For local, you need to prioritize high-impact programs, and every dollar should be spent directly supporting learning, students and staff well-being, and teacher effectiveness.
Thank you. Matt, let's circle back to you on this one. How do you believe a school board member can be most effective in making long-lasting, substantial, positive change for students?
I think that long-lasting, positive change from students comes from stability. And I think if I were to think of the number one thing that a school district can do to set students up for long-term success, I think it is providing stability and facilitating a, a school district that has, you know, funding stability, leadership stability, curricular stability. I also think it's important to have high expectations and to let people know that, you know, we, we are here to help you find success, however you want to define it. And I think that Sherwood's done a great job of giving students both the stability they need to be successful, but also a variety of paths that they can use to find success.
Thank you. Kelly?
We have to prioritize student-centered solutions over institutional defenses. My family's experience has made that crystal clear. We have spent the last two years attempting to give my son, my disabled son, access to his free and appropriate education. We offered compromise after compromise, and I was not aware that the district had hired a high-cost outside law firm in December and proceeded to pay over $135,000 in legal fees in five months. And only after exploring trial options did the district answer our request for mediation. That same money could have funded services for my child while bringing in an additional $70,000 to $80,000 in state and federal money, just having him enrolled and appropriately supported. The choice to spend public funds fighting a child's right to education rather than solving a problem is a deep chasm in our district. I think to make a lasting difference for our students, our students need to be the priority.
Thank you.
Chris, could you repeat it one more time?
Absolutely. How do you believe a school board member can be most effective in making long-lasting, substantial, positive change for students?
Yeah, and I, I would piggyback on some answers that already get, been explained. And I would add accountability and agency for our students, and to, to build that sense of agency for them, and that confidence. And then also accountability on all sides of the coin, whether that be teachers, administration, students themselves. I believe the bar could be raised there, and expectations, and, and it could be achieved and made appropriately accountable.
Thank you. Abby?
Yeah, I think this question's actually easy for me. I think it's always asking if it's best for kids, always. I've been in so many meetings where we have gone back and forth about opportunities or solutions. And for me, it's always best for me just to check my gut and know, like, are we making a decision that we feel like is best for students? Sometimes that's hard. Like, sometimes a decision is not what a kid wants to hear. Sometimes it's not a decision one of our admin wants to hear. And that is just the role you sign up for. And so, but that is the way that I feel like we keep ourselves in the right spot with students. Actually, this last year, we fought really hard to do something as simple as a standards-based grading survey with all of our students to get feedback, because it was something that was coming up repeatedly that really seemed to be impacting students and families. And so we worked really hard to get feedback from as many students as possible and evaluate if that really is what's best for kids, and if it is, how we're going to move forward with that system.
Thank you. Kelly, what is your favorite part about Sherwood High School CTE program? And how do you plan on fostering its growth?
You know, I'm really looking forward to seeing the framework that you're putting out. I really appreciate the work that Mr. Dunn, Ms. Meadows have done to create an impressive Future Farmers of America program. I think the welding program is amazing. However, as a school district, I feel strongly this is an area that we can improve. Sherwood is not currently signed up with Oregon Connections or NEPRIS, which is a free database that connects educators, counselors, and libraries to industry professionals to help kids explore career paths. Sherwood has not connected with local unions to work on apprenticeships and hands-on workshops. And we did see our original agriculture program improve with state funding. This only continues to highlight the need for a representative at the state level.
Thank you, Kelly. Hans?
Yeah, repeat once again.
Absolutely.
Keep listening to the answers, sorry.
What is your favorite part about Sherwood High School CTE program?
Oh, okay.
And how do you plan on fostering its growth?
I, I think it is growing. That would be my summary statement. I just listened to Jackson's presentation, reviewed that at the Y. He's going to present it on Tuesday about his internship at the YMCA. It was so impressive. And he listed his bullet points at the end were all the new opportunities that arrived, arisen in the mentorship or the internship program at the high school level. So that's just one component of CTE. It's a spinoff, but it, it's growing and it's maturing. And there's this huge thrust in that direction, as it should be in today's climate.
Thank you. Abby?
Yep. You guys asked about our favorite part. So my favorite part is the Bowman House. And we have not been doing that for many years. We have amazing culinary arts programs and welding and agriculture and tech programs. And Liz Barrett is doing a phenomenal job making sure that students are connecting with industries around us. But our Bowman House is definitely my favorite program that we provided. It's been on hiatus for a couple of years, and that's been a bummer to see. But I found out today that it's coming back. So it's coming back for the 2026, 27 school year. And they know I'm already ready to support them. I think that they are working on land acquisition, and they will need full board, board support just to keep that program moving forward and keep it up so that it doesn't fall back again.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the district is doing a lot of great things. And I think it's important for the board to, you know, make sure we continue to deliver a lot of different options for students to find success and to keep asking questions, you know, what does success look like? Where are the students who are coming through Sherwood schools that are, you know, finding difficulty or not feeling supported in one path or another? And are there ways we can better support those students and help, you know, create a path that will allow that student to, to go on to define success, however they wish to define it, or, you know, whatever they wish to pursue after, after they leave, leave Sherwood, Sherwood schools. So I think it's a matter of, you know, continuing what we're doing and keeping an eye out for, for what's next.
Thank you. So that was the last of our questions. We would like to give each of our candidates one minute to make a closing remark. Hans, do you want to start us off?
Thank you so much for starting it off. People to thank. I, I just want to thank everybody for attending. And maybe some people will watch this. I know it's going to be sent out. But thanks to everybody who showed up, and I really appreciate that. I've thoroughly enjoyed what I've done and who I've been working with the last couple of years, and hope to continue and see a positive impact. Again, Abby, you should have been on the Strategic Design Committee, because you stole the thunder of the point of the whole thing. But, you know.
I know what's happening around you.
You, you saw it. Yeah. But the students are the center point. And we just have to, as members of the board, keep that in mind and keep all the people we interact with at the administrative level on the same track. Is, is every decision pointed towards a student experience of trite term of success and improvement and readiness for the future? And that's what our decisions should be and will be made, made upon.
Thank you. Abby?
Yeah, sorry. I did not mean to steal your thunder. I didn't even know that was part of your strategic plan. I appreciate you guys coming out. You know, it's always encouraging when people get involved when there's elections or even any kind of voting involved, like for the levy. And we hear from different segments of the community that otherwise we really don't hear from at all. And I wish people would get more involved, to be honest. It's impossible for a board member to track down like every Facebook It's impossible for a board member to track down like every Facebook group and comment and answer on there. And it's also probably not very healthy. It's not the best way to give out information. But you do see how many people have interest or have perspectives on things. And I know board meetings are boring. Like, I've been to a million of them. They're not the most entertaining. We try to make them fun now and bring in like cute kids and do fun things in the beginning, but they're boring for people and we get that. But it would be great if people would take a moment and listen in to parts of it at home and just try to be engaged. We really do like hearing from people and I call people back all the time and chat with them, but it's very often the same people. So it would be nice for the community to get more involved.
Thank you. Matt?
Yeah, I'd echo that. Like, I think that the, as a closing thought, there are, there are a lot of things that we want Sherwood schools to do for our community and for Sherwood students. And I would just ask everybody to consider getting a little more involved. Like, whatever question you brought here today to kind of ask in the back, even though we're not asking questions. But I'm sure everybody has a question in the back of their mind. You know, think of a way to get involved and help be the answer to that question in Sherwood schools. There's a lot of opportunity to get involved. We're all very available and happy to help connect people with ways to volunteer. It's the Middleton Carnival, I guess tomorrow, Friday. So if you want to, if you want to start by getting involved on Friday, you know, you can turn out and support a great cause and, you know, go in a bowl for pop bottles. I'll be there, I'll be there, you know, handing out two liters to a bunch of crazy elementary school kids.
Thank you. Kelly?
I have spent the last month reaching out because I don't think it is your responsibility to come and watch board meetings. I think it is a board member's responsibility to reach out to their community, to embrace their community. And in that outreach, I have heard that people are not happy. I have heard that there is not enough special education supports. I have heard that people are not happy with guns in our schools. I have heard that people are not happy about itemizing books in teachers' libraries. And I have heard that people are not happy with the directions that our schools are going. I want to be that change and I want your trust in this board. I recognize that this is a contentious race and a lot of hurt has been on all sides. But together, we are all neighbors and this is our community. My focus is on that community and supporting it in the best way that I can. And I hear y'all, I want change too.
And with that, I'd like to thank our candidates for being here this evening and for everybody from the community for coming out. And please remember to vote and have a great evening.
Your night. Matt, it was lovely. I really would love to do budget. I'm so sorry this.